Meeting to order of the Cambridge Board of Trustees, our meeting of January 28th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Um, Reinen.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Blackwood.
Here.
Holland Beck.
Here.
Cracklow.
Here.
Neily.
Here. If we can stand and recite. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Lisa, can you explain if this meeting has been properly posted?
Yes, the agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center at Cambridge. We'll stop this break and the village.
Okay, all right, public comment. Anybody wish to speak? I'm going to ask Mr. Christopher Lee to introduce himself. Do you mind standing up?
I'm the new reporter from the Lake Mills Theater, so I took over for Abigail. I probably don't look like you're fresh out of college reporter because I'm not. I used to do this way back, covered Oshkosh and went to West Bend and went back to the media stuff, went to grad school. So I've done all kinds of communication stuff, ran my own business, and then got back into here. So I live in Madison, but I was over in the area, so hopefully I'll see you guys around and get some good stories. If you have any ideas, stop me and holler because we always like to hear some.
All right, okay.
Welcome.
Thank you, Chris. All right, last call. Anybody would like to speak? All right, let me close this portion of the meeting here for a public comment. Let's move on. Approval of the consent agenda. Village Board minutes, last meeting.
I could motion to approve the consent agenda for the meeting of January 14th, 2025.
All right.
I'll second.
Chris has a second. Any questions, discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Approved. Okay, consent agenda is done. Going into reports, I'm going to hold off on mine because it kind of dealt with last week's meeting. The both of us were at for the fire in EMS, so that's a little bit later in the agenda. So I'll hold off until then. Let's see, library board.
Uh, I think the biggest thing from the library board, we are once again reviewing our policies and we'll, we're going to be having a workshop next on February 8th where we'll be working through some policies. And one of those policies will be to establish a reserve for the library so that we have documented how much dollars we'd like to have in reserve for library expenses. We're looking at board expansion, that's later in this agenda for one of the two positions that are open. And that's really about it. I was just plucking away. New year.
All right, questions? Paula on library?
Paula, did you say your workshop's next week?
The 8th.
The 8th.
Yeah, sorry. Is that next week? No, wait, no.
Two weeks.
The 5th. It's the first Wednesday of the month because the second Wednesday of the month is when our normal meeting is, so we're doing the first Wednesday of the month. That's it. Don't ask, don't ask, we'll look at our calendar.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let's move to Public Works update.
We got a committee.
As we met last night, they had a bunch of stuff on the agenda. I'll just kind of cover some wave tops. I'll talk about Highway 134, Lagoon Drive. Right now, MSA is waiting on comments from the DOT. We told them we want them to push forward with that and get those, get that approved as soon as possible so we can make a decision on if we want to get that done this year. And kind of think that might be the way to go. That is in TID 5, there's $523,000. I'm sorry, the cost of $523,000 roughly in TID 5. Right now, there's enough money to cover that potentially. So we're going to look into that. So the MSA is going to keep pushing on that. Welcome signs, there's been, we're meeting tomorrow at 2:30 to discuss, we're going to actually go out there and figure out where exactly it needs to be because there's some concern that it's not in the right place, the trees are blocking. So we're going to go out there, actually look at it, maybe put up like a mock sign and then tweak it as we go for a couple days or a couple weeks and then, and then get that moving. Springwater Alley, we got a quote for that. The MSA did $176,000 to redo the whole thing, the sewer lines and all of that. So you have the pulverize existing, prove the stormer inlets, curb replacements, the two parking lots. So we're going to have to make a decision on if we want to move forward with that this year. It's kind of like, we're going to do it this summer or in 2027 because next year, 2026, the bridge is going in. We don't want to be doing that at the same time because it'll cause too much congestion. So, and also with that, we're going to have the Public Works guys work to reclassify Springwater Alley as a street and also rename it as a street pretty soon here, maybe the next meeting.
So the hundred and whatever that dollar amount you stated, is that, that's for replacing sewer lines as well?
Yeah.
But wouldn't that come out of the water and sewer budget?
Yep.
Yeah.
And storm sewer?
The other factor, we need more information from Rockdale because they're going to connect up here in the corner and we need to coordinate those efforts. We don't want to put something in that's too small and then have to dig it up or dig it up twice. So we've got to get more information from them so that's kind of a streamlined effort. We do have, what is it, $120,000 for road aid, so that, we could use that. But that would, you know, take up all of it and then take out a loan for the remaining. But that's a decision we need to make. If we're going to do that this summer or 2027.
So, so are you involving the water and sewer committee as well in making those decisions?
Probably should.
We're going to have to.
Okay.
Meeting was just last night, so.
Yep, yep.
I mean, there is a, so there's a, there's a pretty big issue. The sewer lateral that's going up there is the storm, storm sewer that goes, is supposed to go all the way out into like the creek, is, has collapsed. So water is kind of just settling in under the parking lot. So that's, that's a concern.
Okay. Got it. Okay, thank you.
Then we got sidewalks. There's about 13,000 square feet of sidewalks. Project could cost from $120,000 to $240,000. So after long discussion on when we should do this, how we should do this, we decided to push forward on concentrating on the high priority sidewalks that are causing safety issues. So the Public Works guys are compiling a list of those and then we potentially go out for, then we're going to put the notices out maybe this, this spring. And then we're going to have to kind of tweak the language on that, on how we're going to go about it. Is it, if the owners are going to have to pay for the whole thing or are we going to help out if it's caused by a creek, which we're not, I wanted to say that the residents have to pay for it. So we're going to have to tweak how those, the verbiage of those notices. So that's, we're hoping to get that out by this, this spring. And then we got to come up with, make a decision on when we want to do this. This summer is the high prior or are we going to wait? And that would probably be another loan. It would be another loan.
Because we have to pay upfront and then we assess the homeowners back.
Yeah, and what, they have five years to pay back?
Five years to pay back.
But more of a tiered approach, high prior and then kind of go down the list for St. Jude's. LBK Park, so we received $100,000 from the developer. So we have $122,000 roughly total. So please, Public Works, they're going to meet with Lee's, get a finalized quote, and then we can start working on prep work, the sidewalk. If we're going to connect it, we're thinking we're going to connect the sidewalk all the way around so it's closed. And then also having money left over with the parks.
Good.
So that's, that's coming up.
Okay.
That was a topic. Great.
Yeah.
Great.
Super talent rotation. So Cody's taking over on February 1st. Jay did a really good job. You guys are working together really nicely and being flexible. So we're looking forward to Cody taking over. I think he's, we think he's going to do a great job. And then the rest of this stuff is on the agenda.
One other thing we talked about was the sidewalks with QuickTrip.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Former to the new.
And the bike trail connection.
It was included in the original plans. The permits have expired, so we have reached out to the developer that they have to reapply for the permits. When that is done, the village has committed them to doing the crosswalk and just attaching that into the bike trails so people from that side of town can come across. So MSA is working on that as well.
Any questions?
Anybody else? I'd like to go back. I have one item here, which is a follow-up to last meeting, and that is the digester plant that is, was being proposed out here for the town of Christiana. The applicant has decided to take that off. Dane County will.
That's down in the agenda.
Oh, they put it in there? Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, we'll get to that later then. Let's see here. Village office updates, Lisa?
First, the Public Works update. The welcome sign project is moving forward. Jay did talk to Cody from Sign Masters today and the cost of installing the signs is paid in full.
Perfect.
So he'll work with them. The last Christmas tree pickup was completed today. They cut down one large elm tree at wall number three and have some estimates, three additional trees need to be removed from wall number three. Have estimates to remove or trim six trees in the village. They've been cleaning the office and the shop and organizing. The small pickup trucks have all had their oil changed and serviced. We had a sewer backup up on South Street yesterday with a lot of work. They did manage to open it enough to get flow through. Expeditors is coming in tomorrow to camera the lines and they're assuming it's tree roots to remove the tree roots. It is, the older parts of town, it's where the sewer lines do run up through the backyards. So expeditors will have to use private property in the driveways to get back to the sewer lines, so.
Have letters been sent to the?
They, he did drop off letters.
Okay.
Those affected by the, we were out there yesterday.
Okay.
I was out with him for a little bit, but he did drop letters today.
Great.
Saying the lines would be worked on tomorrow. They do have their new snow tires for the skid loader. Items on their to-do list is to fix the speed radar sign up by the elementary school. They've been working on that. Finish removing the trees at wall number three. Service the big plow trucks. They will keep the ice rack up as long as the cold weather continues. Trees in the retention ponds and burning. Final locations and paperwork for the welcome signs. Working on the sidewalk priority repair list. Continue shop and office, clean up and organization and snow removal as needed.
Questions for Lisa?
One other thing that was discussed in Public Works last night as a side note is the plow truck that was ordered two or three years ago.
Yep.
Will be coming in this spring probably. So there, they do have options. It will be a loan to pay for the snow plow. It can be done in hole or for the chassis when that's ready and then the truck portion when that's, so.
He did also bring up that they are looking at the mule replacement, kind of starting to get, look at what type of apparatus they're looking for too because that's kind of on its last legs.
They all kind of looked and said, if we needed one piece of equipment, what would it be? It was the mule.
How have, excuse me, how have you found working with Jay the last 90 days as the director? Okay, so this one-third, 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 working out.
I will, Jay's is coming to an end. I will be having him do reviews of the staff from his rotation and his, the other two complete their rotations. They'll also do reviews so then the board can use that information as they kind of move forward.
When the new snow plow comes in, are we, are we selling or getting rid of an old snow plow? What are we doing?
I don't know for sure.
Okay. Do you remember, Chris?
Probably selling.
Chris?
The, Lisa, if you could talk to Public Works and see what they can do about the flag that's here.
Oh, yes, I did notice that.
It could use a change out.
Anything else for her? Okay, all right, thanks, Lisa. We'll move on to Lucy.
Village office.
That was public, that was the.
That was public work or something.
You're right.
You're cruising through this.
Ready to go right to the, okay.
Right to the meat.
A lot of year-end things, year-end reports, and Lucy will touch on a little more. She's been very helpful doing a lot of that. Preparing for the new year, cleaning out all old files, going through what can be destroyed after seven years and so forth. So rotating everything, getting the new files ready. Preparing for the new year too, like we said, Public Works was kind of a prime example of that. Here's all the projects we have ongoing, where are we, what needs to be done still, and what types of decisions will the board need to make as we look at these projects. So kind of taking a dive into what's out there, what needs to be done. So a lot of these projects will be coming before the village board and Public Works Committee again as we receive more information. So be in the lookout. We had a very good meeting last week and this week and share with one or two when they meet with MSA regarding the final steps toward closing out the wall number three project, looking at the final punch lists. I did mention yesterday, as we have these types of meetings, I have been including all three of the guys so that they're all familiar with what's going on. It's not, this is my three months as director. Following through on that tomorrow, we have a meeting with the county on the bridge project, one of the initial kickoff and first steps that will need to be done. So we'll be meeting with them tomorrow, beginning to work on the audit and PSC reports, elections, the notices and so forth, absentee ballots we just received yesterday. They had to be out today. So today was Ben stuffing absentee ballots and little hiccup on the Jefferson County they had. There was supposed to be a primary for judge in Jefferson County and the courts ruled one of those people had to be taken off. So Dane County prints all of our ballots. We worked with them. They got us new ballots yesterday for Jefferson County. Election day, we will be Hank County and Jefferson. They, wasn't worth reprogramming all the stuff, so we'll have a small turn off for Jefferson County. So worked with the county yesterday on getting that taken care of, so lots going on.
How many residents do we have from Jefferson County in the village of Cambridge? It's like 70, 80?
Just over 100.
Is it 100?
I believe 70 registered owners.
Okay, all right. Okay, sounds like you got a handle on it. Questions for Lisa? Anybody?
The new Public Works part-time, he did start doing, they called him in on one of the light snows. He came in, helped do sidewalks and, yeah, they had the sweeper doing the libraries. So kind of getting him started and they'll bring him in as needed.
What is his name?
Jason Steele.
And one of the things they brought up last night was that his availability isn't what they thought, but.
White is open.
Yeah. But they'll take what they can get for extra help.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else, Lisa?
Nope.
Okay. All right, now we will move on to our treasurer report and our bills. Lucy?
So first for bills, a first run in the amount of $40,446.20. Second run in the amount of $4,338.52 for a total of $44,784.72.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $44,784.72.
I'll second.
Okay, questions? This is a nice run. Okay, roll call, please.
Franklin.
Yes.
Blackwood.
Yes.
Holland Beck.
Yes.
Cracklow.
Yes.
Reinen.
Yes.
Neily.
Yes, bills are paid. Okay, what else do you have for us here, Lucy?
Okay, so just this week, I entered $609,259.96 in Dane County tax payments. All first installments for both Jefferson and Dane County are due this Friday. So I'm caught up except for three that just came in at the end of the day, but I do expect the rest of this week to see a decent amount coming in last minute. I've worked at a bunch of ETF, Wisconsin Retirement System, and Department of Revenue trainings, and all of the end-of-the-year reporting's been completed for IRS, DOR, and WRS, except for social security. That one, I had to create an account and they mail you an access code. So I have filed an extension because I'm afraid the access code might not come by Friday. I, that killed me. I didn't know. I wish I would have done this a week or two ago, but I did not know. And they said, I, I talked to them and they said, that's no, no problem. And they, I can't mail it. That's not an option. It has to be done online. A few other things. Oh, the website's been updated. I don't know if I, I don't think I shared that last time. I don't think it was. So I have access. All the committees are updated in there. I took off some old things. I've obviously put myself on there. Trying to think, when we were closed due to the cold weather, I had a ticker going across. If there's anything that you want added or you've, take a look. I haven't dove too deep. I just did the real basic things because committees and even the trustees were out of date and stuff. And there's a lot of committees. And so that took me a while. Let's see, what else? I completed eight hours of election training last week. I had already done a bunch of election training when I was at Marshall, but I had some other election training that they wanted me to do. So I got that all done and they're going to be sending me, what do we call it? I forget the name. There's a name.
Thumb drive.
Yes. Um, let's see here. And then the other thing is, we have been plucking away at the bank accounts. So everything has been signed. Now I'm trying to get online access for Badger Bank, First Bank. They're working on the paperwork. They're sending it to Lisa, and I should have access to the, all of our accounts online by the end of the week finally. I feel like it's, I feel like it's been forever and I can't wait, I can't wait to get in there. One thing, and I don't know if this is appropriate time to bring this up, and I had meant to talk to Lisa about it, but I also want your opinions and, and what you think, is for the audit, there's so much to upload and it's just tedious. It's not difficult, but all the different documents and whatnot. In my previous jobs, I had a laptop with a VPN so that, some of you know, I've been coming in Saturdays for a few hours to work on or going through the stacks and stacks of paper. I'm down to maybe like, I'd say five stacks like this. So once that's done, I don't have to necessarily come in and, and a lot of that stuff's 2024, so I have to go through it because the 2024 stuff is absolutely necessary for the audit. But once that's done, I would like to, again, with permission, and, and I don't know how people feel about this, be able to, to put in a few hours on Saturday or Sunday of working on inflow and working on audit. There's just not enough hours during the week. I'm going to, I haven't even begun to reconcile accounts or put in interests. And I mean, there's just, once, once I have the access, I'm a little nervous because it's just, it's going to be hours and hours and hours of work. And so that's something, I know there's an extra laptop somewhere floating around.
Oh, yeah, it's upstairs.
I'm not sure if it has VPN. I know Computer Magic can do that. I had that at Marshall. I also had that at the City of Sun Prairie. One other nice bonus for that is, if I do, I always just took, even if it was summer, I took it home. I just, I'm always like, you never know what's going to happen. But now that I have the website access, if something happens and I'm at home and I need to put something on the website, you know, if we have some kind of emergency or whatnot, I can go on there right away from that laptop and put updates. There's a, again, I think we talked, where did we talk about a Facebook page? Is that at our?
Staff meeting.
That was our staff meeting. Okay. So we, because our website's our main use of communication, it is nice to have access to do that remotely so that I don't always have to come in to complete some work. So feel free to share your comments and your feedback on that. And I, I've done that before.
Lisa, when was the last time the desktops were updated? The desktops? Are you guys on Windows 10 or Windows 11?
I haven't even looked. I've just worked.
Yeah, I, I don't.
So, so Windows 10, support for Windows 10 ends in October of this, of this year. So if we're going to have to upgrade machines, we should upgrade to laptops for everyone. We should no longer be spending money on towers, laptops and docking stations and monitors. So just keep that in mind as you move forward.
And to share with you, so at Sun, at Marshall, I had a micro PC, but I had a VPN with a laptop as well. Sun Prairie, it was all laptops.
I mean, the last.
And we would, yes, we.
The last two companies I worked for.
We just plugged into a docking station. I had my monitors and then, absolutely.
But I can't remember, I don't think we've replaced the PCs since, since I've been back on the board. And, and I don't think you did it in the two years I was off the board, which would have been the COVID years. Did you guys replace them during the COVID years?
I'd have to go back in there.
Yeah, so if not, I bet you guys are on Windows 10. That support's going to end, so we're going to have to update.
I'll be, sometime coming up shortly, probably having my annual meeting with Computer Magic and so.
So I personally, I mean, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but I have no problem with, with you taking a laptop home.
No.
No checks. No, no checks. No money.
No, no.
I understand, but I just want to.
Absolutely.
It's a laptop.
Yeah.
Laptop. Laptop.
I'm not sure if you're familiar with the audit, the auditing system that we use is different than what I'm used to. But basically, just imagine like a hundred little boxes and then each is asking for something and you're just uploading. So I'm using the shared drive, I'm trying to, or Workhorse to run my reports that they need. And a lot of that, I don't mind, if it makes my, my Monday through Friday a little less stressful and jam-packed, I don't mind putting in, I'm not gonna be working six, seven hours a, I have school, school's started for me. But just a couple, an hour here, like in, on the Saturdays, just even coming in on those Saturdays and not, coming in for three hours and knocking stuff out. And just getting organized, it's made a big difference because there'd still be piles on the floor. And I, and I just, I need, all of it needs to be done. And I have no problem doing that, I just would rather not have to come in to put in a few hours. Just be able to, yeah, and yeah, no checks. Really, my main thing is like the audit, honestly, that's my main thing, and then just having access to the website. So that if I, if we need to update something, we can. And personally, I think someone, I was quite surprised, I think someone should have that access. Whether it's me or Lisa, there should always be somebody that has immediate access to our, our website at all times. I, I know most other municipalities one hundred percent have that.
Brian, do you have any observations on what Lucy was asking about?
There's, first off, I think you're right, get remote access, work after hours, what you need to do. Where I was going was, first off, there's a number of things from the Dane County cities and villages. Around AI and how other organs, other villages, towns are utilizing that. I'm not looking so much at that from where I stand, I work in AI all the time. But think about a lot of the times for manual processes or paperwork that you guys have to repeat and do over and over and over again. Get a list of that, Lisa, maybe gather that up and let's look at that. Let's see if there's a way we can utilize some technology to speed those things up, get rid of some of those things we can get rid of. A lot of other villages have put like a chat bot on their website to help citizens get things. If you guys are seeing, spend a lot of time responding to that, you think that would help, let's talk about it, you know what I mean? Like, I can help with that, so. No promises, how about that, no promises and no money to spend, but let's look at some of those things as you're getting up to speed at least. Jotting things down, geez, this seems like a very manual process to run all the time.
Absolutely, so, one of the things I would like to do is, we're very paper-heavy. And everything that, all of, like, let's just say my tax payments that I just did today, I printed about and I put in receipting. I don't wanna reinvent the wheel right now because I'm still getting my, you know, I want, I wanna fully immerse myself and, and know, know everything from A to Z before changing anything, but, and my previous jobs, it's always just been PDFs. So we have a, you know, a folder for everything, we have a year and it's all on there. But I do know how we work with Computer Magic, that takes up server space as well. So that is a cost, the more I do that, there's that cost. So that's, I mean, there's a lot of things that we could look into for process improvement, streamlining, less paper. We are Tree City, right Mark? We talked about that last night, we are Tree City USA and I feel like I'm.
We're killing them.
I feel using a lot of paper. But no, I, I, yeah, I love process improvement and definitely think, I know other communities, do you have like a, you can sign up for text alerts? You know, for, if the village halls, like, just like the schools have, there's all sorts of different things.
Kristin, Chuck, you guys have any comments, observations here on Lucy's request, work Saturdays?
That's great, whatever she needs to do to get up to speed and have some work-life balance and.
And I hope it's just, and, and obviously it's audit time and our audit is tentatively scheduled for March. I hope that's just, you know, temporary and part of, part of coming into a new position and then not having that treasurer position for a few months. And then even prior to that, you know, some things were missed. So there's a lot of, it's, I feel like I'm going backwards before I can go forward. So right now, it's just super important that all my I's are dotted, T's are crossed, and I get everything aligned. So that hopefully, this whole system just runs itself and I can sit like this one day. I tease, cause that's not gonna happen, but you know what I'm saying. It will get easier, the, the time that I need to put in will eventually decrease a bit. It will. I keep, I have to just keep telling myself that, yes.
Alright, Paula, Chris, any observations or?
My only caution would be that working on the weekends should be the, the exception, not the norm. So, you know, I, I understand that you wanna get fully immersed and you wanna get deeply involved in everything, but don't, don't get yourself in a situation where you burn yourself out. You know, just, I guess.
No, and I.
Manage expectations.
I absolutely get that, and for me, and I don't know if this makes sense, but for me, even coming in for those three hours on, on a Saturday to get some stuff done. If it makes, like I said, Monday through Friday more manageable.
Yeah.
It's totally worth it. It's totally worth it, at this point anyways, a hundred percent.
But Lisa can tell you some war stories about how she hasn't necessarily, she's been put in situations where she doesn't necessarily wanna come in on the weekends, but she's sort of forced to by just virtue of the job, and it can burn you out really fast, so just be advised on that, so.
Absolutely.
Alright, Paula, anything else?
Nope.
I've already shared, so it looks like you've got, from the board, we're okay with that.
Okay.
Alright, uh, do you have anything else? I have two questions.
Yeah, no, that's everything I have.
Okay, one, going back to the website, is there any way that you can give us maybe a quarterly look at how many people are using the website? Right now, I, I get it mixed up with the, some Cambridge, Massachusetts, right Dean? I, didn't you? Okay, isn't there a Cambridge, Massachusetts?
There is a Cambridge, Massachusetts.
There's a Cambridge, Minnesota, there's an Ohio, yeah.
We get phone calls for Cambridge, Massachusetts.
They're out there.
We got one last week.
And if we could just get an idea quarterly, how many people are touching base?
Absolutely, I'd have to work with town, so Town Web is our website, they'll have a report. And I can absolutely reach out to them, they've been great at getting me set up. And there was one thing I could not update, and you have to go and, well, you will know this Brian, but you had to go in the back, I call it the back door to update things, and there's one spot and I'm like, checking everything. Because only they could update that one spot. So after exhausting every little thing, but they've been wonderful to work with and I can absolutely, I feel like we definitely, I wouldn't be surprised if we have a decent amount of traffic.
Yeah.
I don't feel like people are utilizing it and I feel like we can do a lot better. And that is something that I did do, I put a ton of work in, at Sun Prairie especially.
Well, I don't want us to spend a whole lot of time, maybe get some baseline ratings and then we can kinda go from there.
But Mark, let me tell you, when you have a good website, you are, you are decreasing, you're decreasing waste. Because when a citizen knows where to look for a number or a question or a calendar, guess what? Then they don't call us, then they don't call Vicki or me or Lisa. And it is so worth the time putting into that to get them, you know, not everyone's got a computer, not everyone's gonna use it, but.
And you might be calling Massachusetts, but, you know.
I'm.
It, it is super beneficial, we cut down our incoming calls in, in my department at Sun Prairie. We actually, I did a report and I, by like thirty percent.
Yeah, okay. We can just get quarterly numbers.
Yes, absolutely.
And then the other thing is, I had stopped down at the banks and there was one form that I, somebody missed a signature, it wasn't me, cause I was there. You took care of it?
Yes.
Alright, that, that's it, that's all I have. Lucy, anybody else? Have any questions?
The thing I'll ask is, the website still has my husband's phone number listed as mine? He doesn't appreciate that.
We have phone numbers in there?
Yeah, under our board, for our board members.
Oh, okay.
I'll give you.
Okay, absolutely.
If I can fix that, that would be awesome.
Absolutely, that I would not have known, so I can have, so please take, take a moment, look at it. Obviously, with our upcoming elections, I may be updating all those committees and things again soon. But if, take a look at your information, if you need me to update anything, it's super easy.
Beautiful.
Alright.
People appreciate that.
Okay, uh, let's move into some new business here. We'll start off with the acceptance of the Scott Farms development.
I'll make a motion to accept the Scott Farms development.
Any, any questions?
I guess there's a little bit of patchwork that needs to get done, but the developer, Jason Forrest, a very good track record with us and very confident that he's gonna call during the month, so I don't think it's gonna be an issue.
It's weather, weather dependent?
Yeah.
Yeah, he was gonna divert and the plants closed down, so, you know, it'll be in the spring when they do the road out at the apartments.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second, acceptance of the Scott Farms development, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Alright, release of the Scott Farms letter of credit.
I'll make a motion to re, to, to release the Scott Farms letter of credit.
Alright, okay, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. Okay, moving on, library board appointment.
So we had two open seats for the, on the library board, the first open seat we have chosen, or the library is making, the library board is making a recommendation that we appoint Deb Allen?
Brown.
Sorry, Brown. Deb Brown for that position. And we're looking for, the village board has to approve it, so we're looking for the village board approval for Deb Brown.
I'll make a motion to approve Deb Brown to the library board.
I'll second.
Alright, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries.
Then we will have another one at the next meeting, we've had two people express interest for the final position. We're gonna be interviewing them on the eighth, or on the first Wednesday of the month meeting.
So they live in Cambridge or?
Yep, these, these two both had to live in Cambridge proper.
February fifth.
Thank you.
Eight, nope.
Okay, alrighty, uh, let's move to SafeBilt. And we've got an annual increase in the contract, our building inspector, Lisa?
So, kind of hand in hand, they did provide us a three percent increase in fees. As you know, we haven't been totally satisfied with the service since Chris Buchke left. We've attempted to find other coverage along, in a joint effort with Deerfield Marshall and Waterloo, and that did not pan out. Our contract does allow termination with a ninety-day notice. Is this a time when we do say, "Let's go out for RFPs for service"?
Are there other entities that?
There are other companies that do.
Well, I know we have not been happy with SafeBilt at all.
No.
So why would we re-up a contract with them?
Well, the contract isn't up for renewal, but we can terminate it, the contract, and reading through you up to give ninety days. So, if we decide we want to go out for an RFP.
I would.
Okay, let's do that, yeah, let's do that. I, I would agree.
The whole point of them is they had multiple inspectors that could, that could be available and then they're not, you know, we're, just relying on Chris Buchke, he's gone, the whole point was to have another guy available, that's not working out, so.
Yeah.
Aren't they doing virtual or something like that?
So, just to chime in as a former work, I, I worked in building inspection. Granted, it was in-house, but I'm very familiar and Marshall handled everything with SafeBilt. Absolutely, I, I would, it's definitely a hundred percent, yes, I think you guys, as a homeowner, as anybody having work done, I, I just think, yes, and there's, oh my goodness, there, I know for sure at Cottage Grove, there's, oh my goodness. General Engineering, yes, there's several others.
Absolutely.
And when, obviously, when Chris was around, cause that, that's who we had do my home, cause SafeBilt in Marshall, he was fantastic, he spent time in Marshall's office, I know, he came in here, he had, he did an amazing job. That is completely gone, completely gone. And it's gonna create problems down the road when I, I just don't feel confident at all in the inspection part. Not taking out the permit, but the inspection part, and then they never let us know when inspections are done, if they pass or fail. We don't get the results, so we just have all these open permits. And, and Judy is doing all of the administrative work and we get pennies of the permits.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to terminate our contract with Seacoal.
Let's not terminate, yeah, let's go out for RFPs.
RFPs.
Do we have to give them a ninety-day notice?
We may not find companies before.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Oh, we can end the contract at any time with a ninety-day notice.
With ninety days, yes.
Okay, perfect then, alright, then, then once we know if we're gonna go with somebody else, then we can, I see where you're coming from.
Do you need a motion to go out for RFP?
Yeah.
Yes.
Make a motion to go out for RFP for a new, uh, building inspector contract.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna go out for a search for a new building inspector.
And I guess in the meantime, they will have the three percent increase.
When is that effective, Lisa?
Annual, so, the calendar year, so.
How long does that RFP take?
At least, um.
Probably a month.
At least a month, month and a half, to get it ready, to get it out, to get back.
Okay.
I have a question on that, Lisa, will we have one of the committees kind of lead that?
We'll do the.
Or just we'll do it?
Yeah, we'll get a sample and, yeah.
And then who will do the scoring?
That would be public, the whole board? Public, Public Works.
Yeah, um, yeah.
Okay. And then Public Works will make a recommendation for, to the board, I thought that's usually how we've done it in the past?
We haven't gone out for, for, for that in a long time.
Are there, are there things in the existing contract with SafeBilt that they have not been complying with? That we need to go back against them on, or?
I haven't read it. I skimmed it the other day.
Okay.
You know, they did go from a lot of all-in-person inspections to a lot of virtual. We said, Vicki, or Judy and I are doing more of the administration stuff here. I sent him somewhere, somebody working without a permit, he went there and talked to him and said, "Call Lisa and ask what permits you need." And, you know, he called Vicki and say, you know, "Ask questions about the owners," and it's like, you know, "No." You know, "You shouldn't be asking staff." So, it's, yeah, it's been challenging.
I did.
Maybe I'll take a closer read through that to see what.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
See if there's any, just to see if there might be something we should follow up on with, from legal.
When I, and I did do, I did do a RFP for plan review with the city of Sun Prairie. We had a committee. And then they did the scoring and then finance, so that technically would be me. But the finance scored, did a separate score and then it was combined and that's.
We're much smaller than Sun Prairie.
I know.
You have to make sure you scale down.
We may only have two.
You, you need to scale down all that stuff you did.
I'm the finance department.
Just you.
I know. I'd say it'd help if you need.
Yes, yes. Love your enthusiasm.
I know. I, yes, no, but I led, I led that one because there's a conflict of interest with my director, so I had to lead that one, that was my first one. It was same, I mean, plan review and building inspections, very much the same thing.
Okay, so we're going to get going on that, we should, if we start now, it might take us six weeks to find somebody.
Oh, at least, yeah.
And then that's going to be towards the end of February, maybe beginning of March, and then at that point, once we nail that down, we can give, you know, notice, 90-day notice and we're done with SafeBilt. Does that work for everybody?
Sounds good.
Okay, all right, moving into unfinished business, fire and EMS commission update.
So the last commission meeting, I got pulled to my job. I had to do, I had to host some training for first responders of all things, so Red Cross was there to do the training. I attended the training and hosted it as well, so I unfortunately did not make it to that meeting. But I do believe there's a couple of people on the board that didn't make it. Mark, you made it and Kristen did, so maybe you can speak to it.
Okay, Kristen, do you have anything?
As usual, it's an experience that you have to witness in person to get a true understanding of the, the difficulties. Still no true budget coming forth that we have seen. They kind of gave us some projections. I think one of, in looking at the projections on here, one of my biggest concern is the almost $900,000 in EMS wages and budget, or wages and benefits for the fraction of individuals who are still, who are employed. Our portion in the looks like semi-revised version will go up 120%, which again is a little concerning. And then they're still working on insurance quotes despite January ending.
I did make a phone call to Dave Schrader today to ask him about where we sit with the insurance because I got a call from Mr. Han, the commission lawyer, saying that we did receive a favorable quote for insurance and they were going to try to schedule a fire commission meeting yet this week. They wanted to do it actually tonight, but I had this board meeting to be at. So we, we believe that, or Mr. Han believes that there's still opportunity to have another meeting yet this week, possibly Thursday. But I have not seen any agenda or anything yet. As for the insurance, like I said, we got a, I've heard it was a favorable quote, but nothing that I know of has been signed yet. I did leave a message with Dave, asking him to give me an update before this meeting, so I could relay it to everyone here. But that, that went unanswered, so.
Okay.
Forward to you two, Mr. Schrader did provide the Horton.
Quote.
Quote, after I asked to have something for this meeting. On a side note, our, our insurance agent for the village had stepped in yesterday, so we were talking some, he did look at it. This is, I believe, higher than it had been. But overall, he did say Horton is a good company and the quote seemed reasonable.
Chris, do you know?
She had a question out there, Mark.
Sure, okay, go ahead, Joe.
So I talked to Dave Schrader today about the insurance. He told me at 1:30 today, he signed the contract.
How can he do that?
He signed the contract?
He said at 1:30 he was going in to sign the contract for the insurance.
Okay.
Of course he did.
Glad you said it.
I just don't understand how, how people on the fire commission think that they can just act unilaterally.
Isn't this a municipality thing?
If it's a contract, it should be going back to all the municipalities to approve.
And that was the agreement that, when I spoke to Mr. Han on the phone, that was the plan, is we got the favorable, you know, quote from Horton and that's why we needed to have this meeting as soon as possible, so we could vote on it.
And at the last.
And bring it back to municipalities. Go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. At the last meeting though, they discussed a Zoom meeting to discuss the proposal before bringing it to the municipalities.
All right, I'm going to follow up.
Well, let's.
I'll get back to the insurance.
No. Why are you doing, Mark, you shouldn't be getting in the middle of this.
Well, he attended the meeting.
I attended the meeting.
They could, they could facilitate what they took out of the meeting.
Okay.
So Kristen gave her part, Mark did not give his.
Mark did not.
But he just said he was going to do some action and I don't.
I said, as far as the insurance, we will talk about that. I wanted to get what was covered at the meeting and then we can get into the insurance as well as the budget. The things that I tracked at this meeting, Alicia was there, Dave Smithback, Dave Schrader, the attorney and the CPA. The fire budget has been dropped, I think it was, used to be historically 95, it went to 75,000, correct?
Yep.
92 to 75.
Okay, 75,000. As far as their current financial position, there's $55,000 of cash that's in their account and they owe 17,000 online credit. That's what was reported at the meeting. They talked about the insurance and at that time, they've made it clear that they did not have insurance and we needed to have that by February 3rd. So.
First.
First, okay, because without the insurance, then the municipalities are operating bare. There is, and the budget numbers were, were kind of, they were there and then they talked about expenses, specifically the benefits, the wages was one, the insurance was another, and professional fees was still yet another. And so that was kind of moving, that there was a screen and the numbers were on the screen, but there were no handouts.
CPA there?
The CPA was there and he was talking this through. The, the legal, I asked about this, there was $52,000 in legal expenses paid in last calendar year in 2024. And so Cambridge's numbers, and we're going to see this a little bit later, you know, if you're going up at the 125%, it jumps from 268 to 333 maybe, but they, they were talking about dropping down the amount of cash reserves at the end of the year. And initially, I think the shit.
It was 263,000, they want to drop it down to 163,000, so.
I thought it was 299.
No.
Whatever.
250 to 150.
They were going to take up, but when you started looking, yeah, that's.
I mean, that's.
Well, if you drop the cash, then you might need less from the municipalities. So, you know, there is that consideration. I just had that there was a drop of 100 to make it $200,000. We, they continued on and I think the last item that was talked about before they went into closed session was the sale of any of the EMS units.
And it's 92.
Pardon me?
92, Rescue 92.
Yeah, okay, all right, and at this point, I don't think anything's been decided, so.
Well, I think so because they stripped it down and it's in Dave Schrader's garage.
Okay.
So there's no equipment in it at all.
All right, that's an older one, old unit?
That's the oldest.
All right, so those are the items that they talked about.
Yeah, the only other thing was when they gave the treasurer's report, Mr. Smithback talked about being at the bank, having a conversation about doubling the line of credit that they have for, to draw from, and then he was talking about the loans and thought that perhaps paying interest only on all the loans this year was the option. But it didn't sound like Alicia was on board with that or potentially Mr. Schrader was on board with that.
Was there any discussion about Oakland's audit?
Just that the sale, or they had to keep track of run revenue that was coming in from 2024 because that was going to have to go into a separate account. And any, like when they started talking about selling apparatus or something along those lines, that that would all have to go in because of their portion that they would at some point get paid out, but nothing about the audit itself.
I have a correction mark for the numbers you just had said for our share. Currently, we pay 248,964. From what we were given, our share will go up to 548,000, 48, not 300 some.
I, I get it, and there were, like I said, there were numbers and they had them on the, I couldn't even read them. It was like reading a spreadsheet on the back wall, so I, I'll look at what we have.
That's what is in.
That's what this packet is right here.
548,000, not 307,000.
All right, let's go back, now we can talk about the insurance, because I talked to Dave today as well, I wanted to prep for this meeting. And what I understand is that the, the insurance is at 31,000 with Horton. And the workman's comp insurance is at 22,000, so the total is 53,000 and he had put 60,000 into the budget.
50.
Is it 50 in the budget, okay, all right, and so it's, you know, that, that's where we're at. And I can, I can understand where Dave, you know, there was only the one insurance provider that was contacting them and I don't think.
So what did you talk, did he, at what time did you talk to him?
Must have been four o'clock in the afternoon.
I talked to him after I did then and he told me at 1:30 he was signing the contract.
Yeah, okay, so.
Did he tell you he signed the contract?
You know, I, I don't recall that he said he signed it, but I could understand if he did, to give the insurance.
No, Mark, there is no understanding if he did. It had to come back to the municipalities. That's what the ICA says.
I mean, to the commission at that.
Yeah, at least though the commission member should have approved it. He cannot act unilaterally on these things. He's got us in trouble before. You can't just brush that under the rug.
I also know that I laid, I wouldn't say laid into him, but he knew that on last Tuesday, we didn't have anything for insurance. And I don't know what else we're going to do if we don't. Are the municipalities going to be covering this exposure on their own? Now, ideally, the, the commission would meet.
Legally. You can sign a contract for the village without it coming before the board?
You couldn't do that, so he can't sign a contract for the commission without it coming at least to the commission.
Well, I think that in the, in the circumstances that are there, I'm glad that they have insurance and that the municipalities are not exposed.
Mark, that, that is.
Well, I.
Mark, we had, he has enough days to do it correctly. He did not have to take this shortcut.
All right, okay.
Well, let's not jump to conclusions. We don't, we don't know if in fact he has, so let's, let's give him the benefit of the doubt that we are going to have a short fuse meeting with, with the fire and EMS commission where we can wrap these up and we can present it to the board, insurance wise.
And then I'd love to see the date on that insurance contract.
I have a question, Mark.
Yeah.
I know at the last board meeting, we talked about they were supposed, someone was supposed to come to present the budget
Yeah.
to, to the Cambridge board.
And the insurance information.
And the insurance information, did anyone of you reach out regarding that or invite them to make?
I kind of threw, I'll take responsibility for that. I threw a wrench into the whole thing by, by not being able to attend that meeting at the last, last minute, I guess, because, and that threw a lot of things off. So I'll, I'll take the hit on that one. Again, I hope we have another meeting on, on Thursday, so the CPA can be there, we can wrap up these things. When, when you have this, when you get this kind of training from the Red Cross and especially if you're trying to train your night crew folks, it's very hard to schedule them in and I would have had to wait like three months out and I need first responders that are there for night shift, so I, I didn't really have much of a choice. So, but in missing that meeting, I think a lot of things got, that kicked down the road.
And then my, my next question is, so let's pretend he may or may not have signed the contract or it's going to get signed sometime this week. Do they have the funds to pay, pay it? I'm assuming their premiums will be due right away for the whole year, right? I mean, our premiums for our municipal insurance were due for the entire year. Just from looking at their accounting.
That's probably why they went in and asked for a double line of credit, double the line of credit.
Okay.
So that they could use the line of credit to pay for it. Would be my guess on why that request was made.
That makes sense.
Along with payroll.
And to follow up to your first question, I did send an email to Mr. Schrader asking for information on the insurance and the budget. I did get the insurance Monday from him. I did not get any budget information from him.
Yeah, and there's also been some moving parts with personnel as well that affects the budget. There's been some personnel changes that we can, we'll discuss later on in closed session, but that affects the bottom line and the budget as well, so.
There was one item listed, when you sent out the, Dave's insurance quote from Horton, there's an item there highlighted, I don't know if this is going to be a problem, that's why it was highlighted, but I wanted to bring it up. Maybe somebody knows insurance better, but it says, "Insurance will be bound if you please provide financial statement overseen by a CPA." Is that going to be a problem to get the insurance?
I know that, that's something that our commission CPA has been working on.
So if they're in working with it, then they should be able.
Yeah, to get insurance, we need to provide them with at least a, a template of a budget to get the insurance.
That's what it's basically saying, they won't bind insurance until we provide a. Okay, so, okay, so as long as they've been kind of working in concert, okay.
And I think one thing that I took away from that budget discussion the other night was, in fairness to the CPA there, he was a glorified data entry clerk. They were looking to him to give input on what should go into line items and he was turning it back to them and saying, well, that's up to you. So I think a lot of, maybe not a lot, a, a good portion of that budget is incomplete because the CPA did not have the data.
So because of what you're saying and because of what Brian just said, I think we as a municipality should ask for the documentation that was submitted in, in obtaining that insurance regarding the budget. Because I would have a concern on how accurate that might be.
Accurate, correct.
So I don't know how we would go about requesting that.
So you're saying what was, what was submitted by Schrader?
Or whoever. Or whoever submitted.
Whoever submitted.
The policy is not bound until these items are, please have an application signed dated, and then please provide financial statement overseen by a CPA.
So I would like to see the application that was submitted, a copy of the application that was submitted, and a copy of the budget that was overseen by a CPA. Yep. I would like to see both of those things.
What pages?
It says page three in here, but it, it's in the PDF. It's like at the end of that Horton.
It's like the summary, the premium summary.
It's right at the end where it shows the cost.
Yeah.
And it says here, when you're going to sign, these are, and it's highlighted. So I thought maybe that was a discussion we were going to talk about, but it's basically saying, we'll do this bound as long as these are done. Which makes sense. They're not going to give you coverage if they don't know your books aren't in good shape, right?
Right.
You know, that's a problem.
Okay. So Chris, do you want to call his request?
Yep.
Okay. Is there anything?
Or Lisa, can, Lisa, can you request it from the commission? Yeah. Well, you'll just have Lisa send that.
All right. Is there anything here else on insurance before we move to the budget part of it? Okay, now onto the budget.
And again, this is not something that the commission has given us for a formal approval.
It is?
It is not.
The commission has not taken any action, and I have not received anything directly from them for the board to consider. So I think this is what's before him right now.
This was the email that I forwarded you?
Yes, you forwarded it, and then Mark received it from Dave Schrader.
So this is their current draft status budget that you got?
So-ish. So, so right now, are we on to item number three, the first quarter invoice?
No, we're talking the budget.
We're talking the 2025 budget?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We're kind of jumping around.
Why did Lake Mills go down? Are we covering less, or area of Lake Mills? I wondered.
That's the EMS, so it was part of the, that's the ninety-seven percent.
No. Well, if maybe that's how, what, what, maybe that's what, no, because, so currently, Lake Mills is supposed to pay thirty, thirty-eight thousand, which that's not the, that's not the EMS portion. Because the EMS portion would have been.
The EMS portion, Paul. Yeah, thirty-eight thousand, they were paying, including the EMS contracts from the past. And they're no longer getting any EMS?
Just the seven percent.
Way used to be.
So they're only paying eighteen thousand dollars for all of that EMS coverage a year, a quarter? A quarter?
No, they were paying like twenty, I can't remember for sure. I think it was twenty-something, just over, just a little over twenty thousand there.
Just for the EMS.
But, okay. Okay, okay.
Chris, do you know if there was discussion about, because one of the things that we had asked was consideration of the Deer Grove proposal? Do you know if that has been discussed at all?
I, when I knew I was going to miss the meeting, I called up Mr. Han and stated to him what the board, where, actually, I called up Dave and Mr. Han and let him know what the board had directed me to do, which was to go with a Deer Grove option as well as a fire-only IGA. And they said that they were going to bring it up during the meeting and that it was, but you don't know if they brought it up in close.
In close or whatever.
Whatever the case is. I talked to Mr. Han today about the Deer Grove option again, and he said that him and Dave have taken it under advisement.
So I guess one thing that I would like to, in reviewing Deer Grove's budget from 2024, projected for 2025, that they have approximately sixteen full-time employees, and their wages and benefits are about one point three million. And it's my understanding we have approximately five-ish full-time employees, and ours are nine hundred thousand? That really doesn't math well. So we, I need better understanding of where nine hundred thousand dollars in wages and benefits is going.
All right. Is there any other observations here on the, on the budget?
It's a no-go. I mean, I, yeah. No, great, agreed.
I know we did get a updated Deer Grove quote with the equalized value minus the equalized value for Lake Mills. And I can forward that on to you if I haven't already?
You did.
Okay.
Even the small percent of Lake Mills?
It's in there.
Yeah, I think he just put, he just put a five percent or something like that.
Oh, got it.
The total amount.
Got it.
So it's not precise, but it's, there's a percentage, a five percent that's added to it.
Super. You have that?
So, yeah.
We received that?
Yeah.
Can you pass that on to the rest of us, Lisa?
Yeah.
Great.
I have heard, you know, again, this is probably, you know, I gotta watch because it's a slippery slope with personnel and everything. But one of my biggest concerns was people resigning. I think we're down to maybe four, four or five EMS folks right now.
Total?
Or less. So we, we would have a real hard time manning an ambulance. So, I mean, we're, we're kind of in this situation. And what I shared with Dave as well as Mr. Han is, you know, for emergency reasons, we ran into this problem before when Mr. Saloff broke his leg, and we had to use Deer Grove. We paid like a thousand dollars a day, but they provided us ambulatory, you know, services. And, you know, even at a thousand dollars a day, it's, it's still cheaper than what we're paying.
Damn right it is. Can we just do that for three hundred and sixty-five days?
Nope.
No, I don't think so.
I asked already.
It's not going to be cheaper.
But it's something that Deer Grove did say out there, you know, they would be able to support us and, you know.
In the interim period.
Facilitate in place. They're willing to work with us. The only road, the only road bump there is right now is our own fire and EMS commission.
And I think one thing to consider is, you know, they, I know they talked about the rebuilding, the, you know, doing a new director and whatever. We are very well-known across the state, not for good reasons. I think to, even the commission to even consider trying to rebuild this service, it's, I think it's too far gone. I don't think we, we would be able to attract quality individuals. I don't think we would be able to find a, a director who could rebuild it to a functioning unit.
So do we need to have a full four municipality meeting where all board, all the board members from each municipality is there, and we talk about this very thing? I mean, rebuilding an EMS unit at this point with how few people we have, it would be next to impossible. So if that's the goal of EMS eventually, great. Let's, let's figure out how to do that for 2026. For 2025 and the remainder of 2025, let's just sign a contract with Deer Grove so that we know people are covered.
And we're, I mean, we've said it over and over and over again. We are not equipped to be employers.
Absolutely not. And, and this fiasco should prove that more than anything else.
And Chris, I have one question. Out of the four to five employees, do any of you know how many of them are paramedics?
Four.
All four of them are paramedics? Who are still on?
That's what I was told the other day.
Well.
And they, so they have four full-time, or four full-time paramedics or four paramedics total? Don't know?
I think it was a score.
And we still have EMTs?
I believe so. There are a couple of EMTs.
Couple. Okay.
Okay. It just seems to me, Chris, that, you know, you're the one that's going to have to go back. We've got to, we've got to talk to them about whether or not they've got adequate coverage. And, and if they don't, and there is no plan, what are our steps?
Well, this is, this is where I think that, we don't have just Chris do that. This is where I think we need a, all four, all boards of all four municipalities, because this is a big change. And I don't think it's fair to put it just on the represent, the representatives. If they are not bringing it back to their boards, which we know in the past, their full board members were not fully informed as to what was going on.
Correct.
This does have huge budget implications, so I think that makes a lot of sense.
I mean, we've, we've already talked, in this meeting today, we've already talked about, what, three different loans that we're going to have to take out?
Mm-hmm.
And this would be another one. We'd have to take out a loan to cover fire and EMS.
Well, I, I just, I'm trying to get the commission to focus in on what this budget's going to look like. And I, you know, because we don't have a number.
That's futile. It's a futile effort. They haven't been able to give us something now? What do you think is going to change that they're going to be able to give it to us in, for our meeting in the next two weeks?
And.
And it's due January thirty-first according to the IGA.
That's, that's the thing, is we are literally twelve months later, so sitting in the same exact spot.
And quite frankly, if it's close to what this is, is this board going to approve it?
Nope. And realistically, if we're looking at going with someone like Deer Grove or another service, that's a change to the IGA. That has to be a municipality decision.
That has to be at all four municipalities. They have to agree to it.
So if you have a four municipality meeting all together, you could vote that night and move forward instead of, now you've got to all go back to your municipalities?
Correct, correct.
If we post it as.
If they all post it that way.
As action.
That is been an issue.
Well, we could ask them to make sure they post.
Yeah, I think Paula, you bring up a good point because the, the timing of this is to that point now where, you know, it's, it's beyond, you know, shuffling a, a meeting with the, the commission and, and, you know, I think you do need to have all municipality meeting. That's, that's going to be the most beneficial for the decision-making process that needs to take place.
And we agreed in that meeting, in the last time in Oakland, everybody said, this was really beneficial. We should do this more often when there are big decisions that need to be made, instead of having individual.
Piecemeal.
Right.
Correct.
They all said that was a great thing. So let's, 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 let's hold them to what, the words that they used, let's hold them to that. Because for four, for three years, since I came back on this board, I have been pushing for something to happen with the fire and EMS commission. Nothing has changed. Nope. I mean, now we have somebody who is reporting back to us what's happening on the fire and EMS commission. So, so we accomplished that internally on our board, but as far as the commission itself, nothing has changed in the way that they do their business. I'm tired of waiting.
I'm with you, Paula. This is, it was a realization today that, so this is, this time last year was my first meeting. And we are having the exact same conversation, almost to the word.
And this budget that's supposed to be presented by this Friday to the IGA, is this supposed to be an approved budget by all four municipalities or just a budget that they provide?
A budget for approval, right?
A budget for approval.
It was supposed to be in October. This is a, we haven't had an approved budget since 2023. 2024, we had none. It's supposed to be in October?
Yeah.
Yep.
And then if it's not agreed upon, a reworked one by January thirty-first.
Gotcha. And then it's what, arbitration, mediation, one of the two?
Well, I don't know. I was going to say, I think, I don't know.
Yeah.
All right. So it sounds like we want to have a meeting with the other municipalities.
Yeah.
And the commission. Can we, can you get that out, Lisa?
Send out your request?
All right. It, it does seem like this budget is, it has to be talked through. There is no doubt about it. And I, I don't disagree.
And it's got to be a long meeting where we talk through the budget. I mean, people have to be prepared.
I would have them look at this and get it, be prepared to talk about it, whatever numbers, and knowing that we're, we're not there right now. I mean, this is just way too much.
I'm sure our treasurer can speak to it, line item by line item.
Yeah. So we could have a meeting.
EMS treasurer, you mean? Is that what you're talking about, Chris?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure.
We would have a meeting here, make, make Cambridge.
Have a year.
Yeah.
That's probably a wise choice.
And, and Attorney Han, is that his name?
Do we think?
Why does Attorney Han have to be there?
No.
What was that?
Well, if you're, if you're going to talk about, you know, the four communities.
We don't need him for changes in, changes in the IGA either. He needs to write the IGA changes if we agree we want them. We don't need him there for us to decide what changes we'd want in the IGA. We had a better meeting in Christiana without the legal teams.
True.
Okay, so I don't want it to be confrontational.
When we go to close session, do you want me to go upstairs and check the calendar so we can come up with a date? I'll do that. I'll check, I'll see what we have available and write down everything we have available in the next two weeks. And then we can go from there?
It really doesn't have to be confrontational.
It doesn't have to.
No.
Because if you think about it.
It shouldn't be.
A lot of the folks, a lot of the folks that are in, on the commission right now that are trying to make these decisions, whatever, they're kind of in a lame duck status because they're, they're leaving. As of April, they're, they're no longer representing their municipalities. It's only a few folks that are, that are on. I know Alicia and myself are still going to be plugging away, doing it, so.
Alicia's up though, for president.
Is she? I think she's running again.
Yeah, she is.
So I, I think we have to look out for our constituents, make sure that they get the services that they're used to. And we need to be, we need to be neighborly, but we need to be a little selfish, too. So.
Yeah.
All right.
Do we have the Deer Grove numbers available?
Yeah, I do have them. Chris had shared them with the commission, but I will send those.
Okay. So then you'll get back to us.
I'll, I'll run up when we go to close session and get that.
Those of you that are on the, the police, you know, you see how well it works. Right? And that's, that's why I envision the Deer Grove relationship.
I, I would agree.
They're professional, they, you know, they, and to be honest with you, there are certain things that we just are not, it's not within our bandwidth to do. We've been focusing a lot of effort, a lot of us here on this, this board have been focusing a lot of effort on fire and EMS. And it's, we need to start focusing on the broader pictures of.
It's distracting.
Other things like public works issues and, you know, other, other things that are going on, so.
I agree with you.
Just a little information, I did get a call from Eric Ling today, Chief. Just a little information, I did get a call from Eric Ling, Chief Eric Ling from Deer Grove EMS. We had a nice conversation, so we do work well together.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Is there, that takes care of the first two. Then we have this first quarter invoice. What do we want to do there? We're not paying it.
Pay it at a 2023 rate?
Which is.
Which is what it is.
Already talked about.
62,000.
It's already still at, oh, yeah, it would be at the, I mean, it would be the.
2023 rate, right?
The 2023 rate is the $62,000.
I think it's throwing good money after bed.
I, I, we made it really clear to Dave Schrader when he was sitting here that we needed to have a budget in order to know what we were paying. We don't have a budget.
I, I have concern that we agree to pay even the 62,000 and, you know, we received that email that said, you know, "Oh, subject to change with approved budget." I, I can't blindly agree to anything. And I, I feel like if we agree to pay the 62,000, we are blindly agreeing to, maybe not.
I will just, our motion two weeks ago was to postpone discussion action of the first quarter payment until proposed budget insurance information is provided to the municipalities as was discussed at the December 16th, five municipalities meeting.
And we don't have that.
We got the insurance information today. But if, they're not calling this the budget, are they?
I, I have not gotten that from them.
Then, then we don't have to do, we don't have to take any action to, because based on that motion, we, it, the contingencies in that motion haven't been met yet. So we shouldn't be bringing it back up for conversation.
No action.
Ryan? I think we mentioned it last time, right? We asked them, we got to hold them to it. So we need a budget. If they want that on the agenda for that meeting about who's paying invoices, right, we got to have a budget, so.
We put that on the four municipality meeting as an agenda item? Yeah?
We need, need a budget, so.
I mean, hey, what I know is that they've got a line of credit, so whether we pay it now or just go to a line of credit. But at the same time, I also understand that we're trying to hold them to a final number here. And it's been approved by all the municipalities and it's something that we can all live with. So until we have that, I'll go along with this. Because they wouldn't accept this from anybody else. And we will hold off on, on making any kind of payment here. All right. Is there anything else here in open session on the fire EMS mission matter? Janet?
Do you know if Dave Smith went and increased that line of credit? And so how does he have the authority to do that for the IGA?
I, I don't.
Do you have any idea, Chris? Has he mentioned anything about it? I know that was, it was just.
How did he have the authority to ask for that increase in line of credit?
I don't know how I get the authority to ask for the original one, so.
Yeah, we don't know that either.
Great question, Janet.
Okay.
Can I get one more statement?
Oh, sure, go ahead, Joe.
The tender should be back in service potentially Sunday.
Yes. Good, good news.
That's good.
We like ending on that?
So I, we took delivery on it last Saturday. It's up in Appleton right now, getting lettered.
Getting lettered. Nice.
All right.
On this meeting that we're going to have?
Yeah.
I think it should all be open session.
I agree.
I don't think there's anything in there that has to be closed session.
Agreed.
Us talking about the budget, we should be able to talk about that in front of every constituent.
Hundred percent.
Disagree.
So.
And public comment.
Okay. And hopefully the commission will put together a meeting, will make the dates available and get that to them. And they can have the use of the Amundson Center. All right? And hopefully it'll still be done within two weeks. So we start tonight. All right. Anything else on this in open?
So just to, so the reason the four municipalities need to be, from, from my perspective, it's in light of not having a budget and the proposed or the summary that we were given shows 120% increase for all municipalities, we need to have a conversation. Those are the two things that, for me, are the impetus on why we need to talk.
Okay. Anything else? All right, we'll move on. Correspondence. Kayla Spol, UW Whitewater and Actus Collaborative 523 informational meeting. We have this in here for, for us to look at. Lisa, anything?
We did offer an invitation, anyone who wants to attend this meeting. They will be accepting proposals from businesses to fill a storefront. It's collaborative with UW Whitewater. They will receive rent free for a year at that location, but with community input, what type of businesses do we want to see? What?
And that's the, kind of the, the informational meeting, they're going to do a lot of it online. They're trying to get a lot of community interest into what types of business people are interested in. Hey, that, that'd be a great business and generate some things out of that. And that's really what the UW Whitewater group kind of helps put together for that, so.
Something we don't already have in town would be great. Like, I don't need another gardening place. I don't need another coffee shop. I don't need another candle shop. Yeah, we need something we don't have.
Well, Paula, I will encourage you to go onto the website after the meeting and express your feedback on what type of business you'd like to see.
All right, excellent.
Okay, the other piece of correspondence, Lisa had referenced this earlier, Town of Christiania Resolution. And this was dealing with the digester plant. So that has been mothballed. They're not, that application had been withdrawn by the property owner. So. That is it. Do we have any questions, referrals to staff, future agenda items? Anything you want to talk about to get it on the calendar for Lisa?
I didn't get that out of, out of that resolution.
No, I didn't either. I thought it, I thought it had to do with them going back and asking for an agriculture assessment for the solar farm.
Yeah, nothing to do with that.
The digester.
Okay.
But if you're telling us that someone, they rescinded the digester request?
They did.
Great. That's great, but.
Yeah, I heard that.
The one thing that I, I know, I know you're really busy, Lucy, but I know one thing that's on our list is that we can get an invoice together for the bike trail so that we can get that to the bike trail people so that they're, they know that we have an expectation. That was one of the things that in our budget we saw as a revenue item.
Yeah.
So I don't want to lose sight of that.
Lisa, are all those, those motions from last night in there?
Yeah. So, yeah. There were certain things that were going forward. The renaming of the street would affect the library because they're the only ones with that in address on the alleyways, but.
We just kind of call it Spring Water Street?
Spring Water Street.
Instead, oh, that, that's fine.
Yeah.
Thank you. That makes it easy then.
This form, or this information that's in here from the Town of Christiania, actually, it is dealing with it. This was the Town of Christiania. They didn't want to see the construction of the photovoltaic 300 megawatts. And that's what they submitted. And Dane County is not going to hear this because the applicant has withdrawn.
Oh, God.
Their, the application.
That makes sense.
Okay, so it's all of it. All right. And anything else for future agenda items? Okay, we've got some upcoming meetings coming up. January 28th, Village Board, February 4th, Economic Development, February 10th, Plan Commission. We'll meet again on the 11th for the Village Board, 12th will be the Library Board, 18th, Water and Sewer Committee, and then February 18th, another election.
And tomorrow, Public Works will be meeting informally.
I'll go and see.
There will be no action taken, but the forum will be present.
All right. Okay, then it takes us all the way up to item 13. Help me out, somebody, please.
Make a motion to convene its closed session for 19.851 echo deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, fire an EMS commission.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Blackwood?
Yes.
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 Ryan?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes. All right. We are going to take a 10-minute recess.